Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Mesiakos.
Here.
Alderman Denell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Sibel.
Here.
Alderman Harper.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Buck.
Here.
Alderman Lauchay.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
Alprazan.
Please rise as we have a moment of silence in honor of our active servicemen and servicewomen, as well as our veterans. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, and that will be followed by the invocation provided by Alderman Shikidah Hartburns. Moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Eternar God, our Father, Father God, we thank you for allowing us to come together for another city council meeting. We ask of God that you be with us as we make decisions of effectiveness. We ask of God that you be with the men and women of our police and fire, those that are serving, those that are serving. Be with the men and women of our armed forces, so God, those that are serving and those that are serving. We ask of God that you be with our youth council, who is here on tonight, and we ask to bless them in a special way, give them the knowledge that they need. And we ask of God that you be with us as we celebrate Juneteenth. We ask of God that you bless us individually, then bless us all collectively. We ask all in your name. Amen and amen.
Amen.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday 28th, 2019 city council meeting? Motion by Hartburns, second by Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion being carried by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sergeant Arms for this meeting? Motion made by Hartburns, second by Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried by voice vote. Mr. Mohammed, we have a couple presentations.
Definitely. Thank you. I'm going to switch the agenda, flip up our presentations. Coming off an incredibly energetic weekend we had downtown here, including parades and concerts right here at the venue and elsewhere. And on that note, I want to announce on behalf of the venue that tonight at 7:00 PM, right after the council's over, you can go on over to see Beth Lee and the Breakups with Chris Duarte, the guitarist, for a $10 cover charge, having a good time tonight on Tuesday. That's on behalf of the team over there. Also acknowledging the presence of Montgomery Village President Matt Browley, who was here. Although not in that capacity, we appreciate all that you do in the partnership. Tonight, we have a proclamation first for Juneteenth. I ask Alderman Jenkins to come down, and you, Alderman, would you like to join him on the Juneteenth? I ask the representatives of African American Unity to step right on down to the front, if you will, as we celebrate the annual Juneteenth celebration this coming Saturday. I'll turn it over to Alderman Jenkins.
Good evening. On Saturday, June 15th, we have a day that goes down, continue to go down in history with regards to the events that have occurred in our great nation. And the fact that we want to take this opportunity to recognize it is something that I think all of us can be able to think about and realize that we've come a long way in our country. So I want to read this proclamation. "Juneteenth Day, Saturday, June 15th, 2019. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves and Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas news about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed for more than two years, two and a half years, to June 19th, 1865, and reaching authorities in African Americas in the South and Southwest in the United States. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African Americans and is called "Juneteenth", combining the words "June" and "19th", and has been celebrated by the African American community for over 150 years. And I want to say, by the way, Juneteenth celebration here is going into its 19th year. Whereas 2019 Juneteenth Emancipation Day Festival in the City of Aurora will take place on Saturday, June 15th, 2019, at Martin Luther King Park to commemorate this day in history through a community gathering focused on education, empowerment, and entertainment. Now, therefore, Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of the City of Aurora, do hereby declare Saturday, June 15th, 2019, as "Juneteenth Day" in the City of Aurora, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. Whereas, therefore, this seal has been set in hand and calls to affix June 11th, 2019, during Aurora City Council meeting. Again, "Juneteenth" for everyone. Thank you."
Thank you to City Aurora, the Aurora African Heritage Advisory Board, Aurora Township, Dunham Fund are all sponsors of that event under the leadership of African American Unity. We've also concluded the school year for all of our schools here in the city. So tonight, we have the annual presentation of the Aurora Youth Council. Please join me in welcoming Innovation Chief, Dr. Adrian Holloway.
Good evening, everyone. This is going to be our second presentation to the city council on the activities of the Aurora Youth Council. And I am just so pleased to have so many members here today, and many of these members are actually graduating this year. So they're leaving us, and they've been with us since the, most of them have been with us since the inception. So we have our veteran Youth Council members. But for our new council members on the Aurora City Council, our Aurora Youth Council was established about two years ago. And the interest in establishing the council was to provide an opportunity for our young residents of the city to give some insight on what may be some of the activities that can be supported by the city that will benefit this demographic and this population. So it was an inaugural group when they started, and they've been so instrumental in not only providing that voice, but actually hosting activities that they've established themselves. So we're looking forward to a presentation, but I did want to give an opportunity to acknowledge our members and those who will be leaving us as well. So all of our members, we have Adam Pauly, who represents Aurora Central Catholic, Jo Balmourey, who represents Matia High School, Juliana Salinas, who represents Oswego East, Amanda Duval, who represents Rosary, Ellen Sweeney, who represents Wobanzie, Ella Peter Gonzalez, who represents West Aurora High School, Kachul Gumpula, who represents IMSA, Arleeth Rodriguez, East Aurora High School, Margarita Medina, East Aurora High School, Nalali Ramirez, IMSA, Jake Kelly, Wobanzie, Mohini Shanker, Wobanzie, Nate Hastings, West Aurora, Simone Barnes, West Aurora, Saher Zamin, Matia Valley, Safa Zamin, Matia Valley, and Cole Griselle, Batavia. We have a nice array of students who represent both our public school districts and our private school districts. I do want to acknowledge those who are leaving us and let you know where they're going, because if you've had an opportunity to interact with any of our Youth Council members, you know this is a brilliant group of young people, both those who graduated already and those who are graduating this year. So I'm going to leave the last one. Juliana Salinas, who's not with us today, she is attending Loyola University. Amanda Duval, you can join me. Amanda is going to be attending U of I. Simone Barnes is going to be attending North Central College, she's not with us this evening. Ella Peter Gonzalez will be attending Marquette University. Cole Griselle is not with us today, but he's attending Brigham Young University. Kachul Gumpula will be attending University of Chicago. Nate Hastings, who's also a member of our staff here at the City of Aurora with our IT Division, is attending Wobanzie. Jake Kelly, going a little far, he's attending University of Oregon. Nalali Ramirez is not with us today. Salinas, I mentioned, is going to Loyola University, she's not with us today. And Ellen Sweeney, I am pleased to say, is attending my alma mater, Ford University in New York City, she's not with us today. Saher Zamin is attending St. Olaf College. And last but not least, is also our president of Youth Council this year, Jo Balmourey is also going to New York, she's attending NYU, New York University. Jo will be making our presentation today, but I just wanted to acknowledge again all of the work that these young people have done this entire year. Jo and Ella and Amanda have been with us since the inception, so they've been with us for two years. We, as you can see, are graduating several members of the Youth Council, so we are completing interviews this week to bring new members on board, so we will be bringing those for appointment relatively quickly. So I'm going to thank you for attending, but...
Good evening to the Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, and citizens of Aurora. I'm pleased to be here with you tonight as a spokesperson and president of the Aurora Youth Council. My name is Jo Balmourey, and I'm a recent graduate of Matia Valley High School. For those unfamiliar with the requirements and duties of the council, members must live within the boundaries of the city, be between the ages of 14 to 18, and demonstrate active leadership within their school and community. Following a rigorous application interview process, candidates are selected to serve on the council for a term of two years. This past year, the council was made up of youth from several high schools across the city, including East Aurora, IMSA, West Aurora, Rosary, Batavia, Aurora Central Catholic, Matia Valley, Wobanzie Valley. We thank our graduated seniors for their dedicated service and leadership. Dr. Holloway, I already told you where we're going to go, so I'm going to skip that. Some of these members are here tonight, and I would like to thank each of them for committing themselves to the youth of Aurora. All members must assume an advisory role for the Honorable Mayor Irvin and city leadership for issues related to Aurora youth, as well as conducting community outreach activities. Our mission is to ensure that the youth of Aurora are becoming more involved with our city. We operate under the mentorship of Chief Innovation Officer Dr. Holloway and Mrs. Deanna Cross. Today marks the second annual city council report. I'm excited to share with you the happenings of the council over this past year. First is our induction and overview of our monthly meetings. On the second Wednesday of each month, we convene in Room 5A in City Hall from 4:30 to 5:30 PM. The first assignment all members are given is the Open Meeting Act training through the Attorney General's Office and a lesson in Robert's Rules of Order, both enriching and educational experiences. Our agenda items are regularly as follows: welcome, acceptance of the agenda, approval of minutes, speakers, product ideas, announcements, and adjournment. We held executive committee elections at our August 8th, 2018 meeting. I was elected president, Ella Gonzalez as vice president, Jake Kelly as secretary, Amanda Duval as treasurer, and Nayeli Ramirez as social relations liaison. We will hold new elections due to the departure of the seniors at our August 14th meeting later this summer. Additionally, we've had the opportunity to create several project committees and appoint their respective committee chairs, including the Youth Leadership Summit Committee chaired by Adam Pauly, and the STEM Fair Committee chaired by Safa Zaman. This year, we were honored to listen to luminaries from the community through the Speakers Bureau. We heard from city CFO Marty Lyons, who illuminated how the municipal budgeting process works and the city's utility management. Local attorney Deb Lang spoke to us about expediting ordinances through a commission she was heading. Deputy Mayor Chuck Nelson spoke on his career in city government and offered us advice on leadership tactics. Aurora Fire Department Chief Gary Krynitz and Deputy Chief John Gilbert spoke to us about their service as firefighters, highlighting the dangers of the job. We're grateful to have been able to hear their perspectives and utilize our insights in our professional development. Following our successful inaugural years as a council, we used our second year to focus on planning for the future. The two major events we were planning for, a youth leadership summit and a STEM fair, were led by younger members of the council and guided by the experienced seniors. These younger members will continue to direct these projects this upcoming year and will likely take place later this fall. Additionally, in planning our own events, we co-sponsored a campus awareness self-protection seminar for high school seniors with the Innovation Department on April 27th. Two of our members, Adam Pauly and Ellen Sweeney, were also involved with State Representative Stephanie Kivowitz in putting together a bill to create a statewide youth leadership committee, and it actually passed down in Springfield earlier this year, so congratulations to them on that, we're very proud of them. As we reflect on our second year as a council, we're excited to keep learning and working to further our mission of representing the youth of Aurora. We hope to work closer with you, the city council, as we organize new events that will benefit fellow citizens of Aurora. Thank you for this opportunity to serve our community. Thank you.
I'd like to make the comment that the number of times that we have presentations at the beginning of our meeting for various groups, parts of the community, I think it just absolutely reinforces what a great community we have because of the energy, the diversity, all of the great ideas, all of the good accomplishments that all these different organizations are involved in. We're seeing it again tonight. Our congratulations to the Juneteenth for the continued work that you're doing, good success on this year. We thank the council youth very much in regard to all of your efforts. I think it's very clear that we have here our future, our leaders in the future. So we expect in maybe five or 10 or 15 years, depending on how many of these people want to go away, we're going to see up here at this point. So we thank you very much for all of your efforts, continuation in the future. And for those of you who are going on, what a diversity of schools, what a great, I'm not going to point out the number that are going to my alma mater and Mr. Mesiakos' alma, Mr. Seville's alma mater and the University of Illinois, but all of your schools, all of what you're doing is just tremendous, so thank you very much for that. All right, we will... We will move on at this point. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall now engage with or respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting. The first speaker we have tonight is Joan Solms.
I would think that if abortion and Planned Parenthood don't upset this council, what I'm going to say won't either, which involves homosexuality and a parade on Sunday. The most used word in the march was "love". What I would have preferred was the word "privacy". When I wrote my letters and they were published, I supported the issue that homosexuality was not a crime. Reading through the LGBT statements, I understood that all they wanted was their legal rights and privacy. Those constitutional rights were recognized as legitimate and granted by the courts. Well, it seems the bedroom doors have remained open and bragging rights are now in our face 24/7. We now must confront the results of the changes being made in society because of this ruling. One problem that has not been discussed, and I will raise it here, a word that is distasteful, but the dictionary and common sense reality, it is masturbation. And Webster, 1963, calls "self-abuse". I hope this subject does not make the council skittish, but we did not instigate this war on society. We now have sex education in the schools, and we will practice homosexuality, be included in it? It is a form of birth control. Maybe the subject should be left to the parents to explain and teach. There must be a dozen ways to utilize it, no pictures, please. When I was a foster parent, DCFS banned us from speaking to the parents' lifestyle, counting on smoking, and drinking, and on drugs, that they were not good for them, but never could I mention their sexual choice, that was forbidden to us to mention. Okay, how will the persons of deep faith be prohibited from presenting social, physical, and religious explanations to their family, friends, and society on the gay procedures? And who will teach the youth how to experience this act and adjust to it, just as they are now taught how to put on a condom? Will it be the parents, the teachers, the doctors and nurses, the clergy? Please tell us quickly. My grandchildren are already discussing it with me. And by the way, late Saturday night, my son and I blessed the city council building, library, Fox Valley Park District, Aurora Warehouse College, Aurora Police Station, and the Parade Path with holy water. And we prayed for the employees' conversion. You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, do we have additional speakers?
Marjorie Logman.
Hello, good evening. I realize that Mayor Irvin is not here, but I'd like to read this into the record anyway. I sent an email to the mayor and told him I would read it, and he did not respond. So here it is. Dear Richard, I realize I will probably not hear from you, as negative emails are not what you want to confront or respond to. Do you realize the disruption you have caused to ministries that are diligently trying to help people in the name of Jesus? Now, Pacific Garden Mission in Chicago is under attack. Pastor Phil is a friend. They are helping people every day and helping the community. Isn't that what we should be doing? You have, as our president, stirred up fear and judgment of others. This is not what America is or what Aurora should be. Isn't this what you fought for during your service to the country? Freedom and understanding of all, with a good understanding of compassionate protection and not fear mongering. I do expect a response. I have had a problem with Aurora Development. It has given me pause. Through your program to bring creative, high-tech knowledgeable college graduates to downtown, you are marginalizing and causing resentment in the people who built the city and those that do not fit the standards you have set for the elite. You may see diversity in this group, but you are leaving a lot of us out. Festivals, free concerts are not the panacea. River Edge Park, the train station, and events only the elite can afford are causing Aurora to, one Aurora, to be a falsehood, and it's happening. Government is for the people, by the people, and of the people, not for the enrichment of the mayor, the elected, the elite, and investors. River Edge Park is an example, as it was built near low-income and senior residents without regard for them. I will be calling the ADA to see how legal it is to charge more for people with disabilities at River Edge. The new configuration at the train station is an inconvenience to those that use the buses and those with disabilities. The Tiff Districts and incentives to developers downtown are very close to being pay-for-play. I would like to see the ethics panel put into place more quickly than set, especially with elections coming. I think it should include at least two citizens, and I would like to be one of them. I submit to the clerk a request for the ordinance passed to remove flood restrictions on downtown buildings. Thank you very much, and I can give the clerk what I said for the record. Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul Fleming. Okay. No further speakers than Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you very much. Then, Madam Clerk, will you indicate the next item on the agenda and under the merit of appointments?
Item 19-0485, a resolution reappointing John Duggan to the Aurora Police Pension Board.
Go move. Second?
A motion by Shikidah Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being no questions, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Sibel?
Yes.
Alderman Harper?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
Alderman Lauchay?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12 A's, zero N's.
Motion carries. I don't know if Mr. Duggan is with us here tonight. All right. Who's in there? Yes.
I have a comment I would like to make.
If it is in regard to any of the speakers, it's not...
No, it's not a part of the speakers.
Okay.
It's not anything... I can't let the time go by any longer. During the last city council meeting, on May the 28th, when the mayor was announcing the committees, we all heard, I mean, we are a city that the mayor has chosen, the committees all along. I was appalled to hear that when it came down to the structure of the committees, that Patty and I was singled out. It got next to me, I try to be quiet, but I'm not all the time. My concern is, I feel that it was disrespect. I don't understand how an Alderman could sit on this dience and question the caliber of other Aldermans in which we were elected. I've done this seven times, I was elected. The pain that I have is the fact that it's a colleague that tried to demean us, and nothing else was said. I feel it was wrong then, and still wrong now. The problem that I have is, it's the first time we've ever had a woman chair and a woman co-chair. Not seeing that that was a problem, none of us knew who the mayor was going to choose, but he did a great job in choosing who he chose. We can't argue with who he chose, we've done it over and over again. For us that's been here for a long time, we know the mayor has always chosen who the committee would be. He's chosen a chair, and we've been blessed, for the four of us that have chaired all these years, we still cheering. But it's wrong for Alderman to demean or disrespect any of us publicly. And the worst part is that it was two women. It was two women. There's no reason to disrespect anyone, but we sat here because of the votes from our constituents. We sat here because we have a job to do. No one at the polls ignored us or disrespected us or said we couldn't do the job. So that is my pain. But I know Patty got some pain, too.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this up, because I do think it's time to clear the air here, because it has been a very uncomfortable situation. I agree with what my colleague Alderman Hartburn has saying. It was a very unfortunate situation that, first of all, I was called out for not being capable to... It was a very unfortunate situation that, first of all, I was called out for not being capable to lead a meeting, for not having the ability to be a co-chair of a meeting. And I was forced to publicly defend myself, not only once, but twice. And when I did defend myself, the alderman doubled down on the situation and went after Alderman Hartburn in saying that her inability to attend meetings. So it was very much an attack on us, not just as colleagues, but very personal attack on us. And I might ask, I'm very curious, I am one of two new aldermen. I am one of two new aldermen who were given co-chair positions, but yet I was the only new alderman whose name went into question. Therefore, I take that as a gender issue. And I do believe that this is a groundbreaking time for us. There's a lot of new things going on in the city, and I'm very honored to be co-chairing with Alderman Hartburn.
I have to say, my mother taught us where you mess up at, that's where you straighten out. My mother was a gracious, loving, kind woman. Look, 94 years. That's admirable. In her right mind, still in business when she died. She left us with businesses. My point is to talk about the fact that my mother... My mother passed away 10 months ago. Great woman, God-fearing woman, loving, kind, sweet woman. But to talk about her because I'm taking care of my mother? I had power to turn over her life and death. But when a doctor called you and said, "You have 3 to 24 hours to get here, or she'll be gone." What have any of us done? What we have done? We caught a flight to Miami the next morning, early in the morning, drove to Naples, Florida. When I got in the room, "Mama, help me out, baby." Heed that drug within a secret place of the Most High Shell. What, mommy? Not on the shadow of the light. I said, "We can say to that rock, mommy, be that what?" Be that moon. She couldn't even hardly talk. But she knew the scripture enough, that she put it in me enough to quote it enough. And I kept it going, until she got strong enough. Mommy, help me sing this song. She was a writer. She wrote songs. And I started singing the songs that she knew. Her voice got stronger and stronger and stronger. They moved her out of that room in the hospital into a hospice room. My mother said, "I want to go home." I put all that into play before I left. I had to. That was mama. And I wish many times I could hear her voice again, but I recorded the incident so I could hear her sing to me. I could hear her. But for aldermen to demean someone because they took care of their mother? I don't know no one in this room, no one in this room, that wouldn't take in their time out to be with their mother or want to see their mother again if they were deceased. Do I have a church? All I'm saying is, it was wrong. It was wrong. You all saw my little mother come. She came back and forth every year to be with me. But to demean the fact that I'm taking care of my mother, or because he felt that I was sick? Are you kidding me? Who knows that they're really well? Because many people are sick in their head. That in mind is a terrible thing to waste. And when you waste it talking about us on this dais, you hurt all of us. They may not, he may not have called your name, but he talked about all of us. What caliber is this? What caliber is this? We have a love for our community too. And the sad part is, I get a lot of calls from Ward T. and his ward. I get calls too from his constituent. So don't act as if, you know, you're the only one. You're not. If you wasn't chosen, there's all the times. We had no idea who was chosen. Did y'all know who was going to be chosen for the committees? We wasn't told. But when the mayor chose who he selected, that's where it was.
So Alderman LaFche, this room was the place in which you insulted and demeaned both of us. I would like to give you the opportunity to apologize publicly.
So first of all, it was definitely not... I'm sorry that I've hurt your feelings. I'd written a letter of apology to Alderman Burns. I hand-delivered it, so apparently that's not good enough.
I haven't read your letter.
Okay, well I...
You want to talk about it now? Bring it on.
No, I don't want to talk about it now. I did what I thought was right to do, to write you a letter of apology. After the meeting, I said to you, Alderman Smith, this is not personal. And during the meeting, I said, "I don't think that it was fair to you to have to be in a vice chair."
I don't need you speaking for me.
I'd like to finish. You can...
Council members, if we could not have it as a cross-examination situation, we are each permitted to speak. So please, if you'd allow Alderman LaFche to finish his comments.
So I did apologize to Alderman Smith afterwards and said it wasn't personal. And I did not say anything about... I don't think that anyone who's been an alderman for three weeks should have been a vice chair. That's just my opinion. And that's, I think, we're, this is a free society. We can say what we feel. We weren't given the chairs and vice chairs ahead of time. No one talked to me about it. I don't know that anybody talked to anybody about it. I don't think it was right to put that in front of us and then just vote on it. This was the first time for me. I was just given a committee. There was no discussion about it. There was no vote. When I was signed mine, so I don't think there was anything wrong with having some discussion about it. I didn't call out Alderman Yamas because I didn't realize he was a vice chairman. Because he was, I wasn't on that committee, so I didn't look at it. So it's my opinion that with a new alderman, maybe it wouldn't be good for vice chairman, but I did apologize to both of you. And it certainly wasn't women, and I'm sorry that I hurt your feelings.
I think it would be appropriate at this point with comments made legitimately and straightforwardly and sincerely on any of the aldermen who have spoken this part. I think the issue has been discussed, and I think we need to move on the agenda.
Mayor, thank you for this time.
Right. Will the clerk now please read the consent agenda in full?
Item 19-0223, a resolution establishing a complete count committee for the city of Aurora, Illinois for the United States 2020 census. Item 19-0262, an ordinance approving a revision to the Ocean and Land and Woodland Corporation Plan Description on 11.34 acres of property located in the southwest corner of Meadowbridge Drive and 75th Street, and amending ordinance number 3100, being the Aurora zoning ordinance and zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of R4A, 2 family dwelling district, and OS1 conservation, open space, and drainage district. Item 19-0263, a resolution approving a revision to the preliminary plan and plan for property located in the southwest corner of Meadowbridge Drive and 75th Street. Item 19-0265, a resolution requesting approval to procure professional services for IT risk assessment development of National Institute of Standards and Technology NIST 800-53-1, Policies and Incident Response Plan to Heighten Security of the Information Systems and Critical Infrastructure Used Within the City of Aurora Government. Total amount not to exceed $86,000. Item 19-0278, a resolution authorizing a master license agreement between the city and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC to facilitate the installation of small wireless facilities on city structures within public rights of way pursuant to the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act. Item 19-0338, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Bobcat Toolcat utility machines for the Fleet and Facilities Maintenance Division from Atlas Bobcat in the amount of $90,006.00 using Sourcewell. Item 19-0344, an ordinance proposing the creation of a business district in the city of Aurora and establishment of a public hearing in connection with the same Yorkshire Plaza Route 59, Business District Number 1. Item 19-0352, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement for the property located in the northwest corner of East Indian Trail and North Florence Avenue. Item 19-0360, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a replacement cargo van for the Aurora Police Department from Curie Motors Chevrolet in the amount of $25,989.20. Item 19-0393, an ordinance amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, ending December 31, 2019, amendment number 1 for 2019 fiscal year. Item 19-0414, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement at 1250 North Florence Avenue. Item 19-0415, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement at 1304 East Indian Trail. Item 19-0417, a resolution to award the contract for the 2019 contract number 2 to Geneva Construction Company, P.O. Box 998, Aurora, Illinois 60507, in the amount of $1,593,196.00. Item 19-0425, a resolution authorizing a contract with Superior Excavation Excavating Company 424, San Carlos Road, Manuka, Illinois 60447, in the amount of $1,536,833.00 for the Garfield Avenue Sewer Separation Project located in Wards 4 and 5. Item 19-0426, a resolution awarding the 2020 Resourcing Sanitary Sewing Sewer Televising Contract to National Power Rotting Corporation 2500 West Arlington Street, Chicago, Illinois 60612, in the amount of $193,750.00. Item 19-0431, a resolution to accept a grant of $87,575 from the Illinois Secretary of State to support the outreach efforts of the Aurora Complete Count Committee for the 2020 U.S. Census. Item 19-0437, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the local agency agreement for federal participation with the state of Illinois, authorizing the Director of Purchasing Design and Engineering Agreement with H.R. Green Incorporated in the amount of $101,096.00 to appropriate motorfield tax funds for the Montgomery Road Bridge Project, MFT number 16-00315-00-BR. Item 19-0442, a resolution for the city of Aurora through the Aurora Police Department to enter into an agreement with Indian Prairie Community Unit School District Number 204 concerning police school and resource officer program. Item 19-0443, a resolution entering into an agreement concerning reciprocal recording of criminal and quasi-criminal offenses of students enrolled in the Indian Prairie Community School District Number 204 in the city of Aurora through the Aurora Police Department. Item 19-0444, a resolution for the city of Aurora through the Aurora Police Department to enter into an agreement with Indian Prairie Communities Unit School District Number 204 concerning the crossing guard program at District 204. Item 19-0448, a resolution to authorize the city of Aurora to enter into an amended lease agreement with Lafarge Evergits Illinois Incorporated. Item 19-0450, a resolution requesting approval to accept the proposal from Tetra Tech to conduct threat and vulnerability assessments for the city's Aurora and neighborhood critical infrastructure for $75,380.00, as a change order to Resolution R 18-152 passed on June 28, 2018. Item 19-0453, a resolution awarding the Montgomery Road and Meadowbrook Drive, West White Eagle Drive Traffic Signal Installation Project construction to the low bidder, H&amp;H Electric Company, in the amount of $273,718.85. Item 19-0471, an ordinance amending Chapter 48, Article 2, Section 48 through 57, entitled Charges for Service, the Aurora Code of Ordnance, entitled Municipal Utility Service Water and Sewer Rates and Establishing Rates for Said Services.
Second?
A motion made by Hartburn, second by Garza. Are there any questions or motions to remove items from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman DeMell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Savel?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12A, 08s.
Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Let me make a comment at this point that in light of the speed and accuracy that the clerk reads through the consent agenda, you might refer to a poem that Shel Silverstein did in which you're supposed to say the poem without taking a breath. So I had challenged the Madam Clerk to be able to try to do that, but it's going to depend upon the length of the consent agendas, so... All right, is there, the next item, is there a motion to authorize...
Second?
...faming of bills? A motion by Hartburns. I'm going to give it to Franco, all right, once in a while. Are there any questions or items in reference to the bills that need to be raised? Yeah, Mr. McFly? It's item number two on the...
Item number two, it's an IT matter.
Am I on here? No, there we go. That bill is, I know that it just says CYLLC. That is for contracted services. The IT department uses temporary agencies for staff for contracted services to provide IT support. I can get further information on it. The purchase order that I have refers to Resolution R 18-292 dated 11/13/18. So this is something that was approved by a council. I can look that up if you'd like.
And it went through a committee?
Yes. It's paid for under a resolution. Give me a moment, I can take a quick look. Without an item?
The name of the company is SI LLC?
That's the name.
And that went through finance committee?
It does not say where it went, but it would make sense that if it was for a purchase over $25,000, that that's where it went. Was that last year, did you say? Yes, Resolution R 18-292. And that's the actual resolution, not the legis R number, so I would need to go look that up. Why don't we just hold that? Then we can hold that and respond via email. Right. And if you have any follow-up questions, I'll respond to the whole council. All right, is that acceptable?
Excellent, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or items? All right, the motion will be then for approval of that list of bills except for item number two. Madam Clerk, will you? Okay, on removing that item, okay, all right. A motion made and seconded to remove that item. Madam Clerk, do we need a roll call or a voice hold on that?
For the removal?
Hmm.
Voice weight goes, except...
All right. All in favor of removing item number two on this list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, then, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on the resolution?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman DeMell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Savel?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12A, 08s.
Hearing no other business to come for the council, is there a motion to adjourn? A motion by Hartburn, second by Jenkins. I'm going to move this around. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned. If the left side went wane.